Call the meeting to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Mary Beth.
Nelson, Orison, Larson, Wunschel, Hanson, Reed, Bulk.
Here.
Item three is the consent agenda. A is a motion to approve city council minutes of October 3, 2022. B, motion for licenses to approve five-day Class C liquor license for Sacred Heart Fall Gala Event, November 5, 2022. Renewal of Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for Sneakers Sports Lounge. Renewal of Class C liquor license with Sunday sales and outdoor service for Spencer Municipal Golf Course. And renewal of Class B wine permit with Sunday sales for Midwest Music, Inc., also known as Okoboji Wine Merchants, all subject to final approval by the Iowa ABD. C is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds, budgeted transfers, for the month ending September 30, 2022. D is a resolution authorizing and directing the temporary closing of portions of City Street at First Avenue West, West Ninth Street to West Tenth Street in the city of Spencer as requested by Hope Church for the trunk or treat event, October 30, 2022. E is a resolution adopting final assessment schedule for nuisance abatement and confirming and levying the assessments for tree trimming, 2021. F is a motion to approve two 2023 Ford utility police interceptors from Don Pearson Ford for $93,970, less a trade-in of $10,000. This is a CIP item. G is a resolution approving property acquisition and temporary easement agreements for 2023 East Side Separation Reconstruction Project. And H is a motion to set a hearing date for November 7, 2022, at 6:30 PM for Budget Amendment Number One to fiscal year 2023 budget. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Bill. Second by Tom. Any discussion?
Dan, maybe you could go through the property acquisition so people out there understand why this project, we need the acquisition and stuff for this property.
All that familiar with that project, somebody else.
Yeah, well, I was wondering, I thought I'd start with you. Looks like we got an expert.
So this is for the Fourth Avenue East project. It's for a street. It's Sixth Avenue. So that little narrow chunk of Sixth Avenue between Fifth Street and Fourth Street over by the high school is what we're doing. And so in order to get that street a little bit wider and get a sidewalk in there, we needed some additional right-of-way. And so that's what this is all about, little triangles. And I think we've got them all, or all but one, or we're getting close. Yes. And then the other part of that is the temporary easement agreements. And so, you know, that project starts at Fifth Avenue, goes all the way to Tenth Avenue East. And a lot of the work in there, you know, it's utility work, but there's sidewalk work in there also. And because it's DOT-funded, we need agreements with the property owners to step on their lawn to replace the sidewalk, because the sidewalk's right on the property line. So there's like 32 or 36 of those agreements, and I think we've got most all of those now, too. So that's what those two items are.
I remember we had talked about it, but it's been quite a while ago when we discussed this.
I talk about the whole project a little bit in our updates.
All right, appreciate that.
So Jim.
My question on that, so the, from third to fourth is where the Sixth Avenue is getting redone.
Yeah, what did I say? I think I said.
Fourth to fifth.
Yeah, third to fourth, going south.
Where the sidewalks are already right on the curb on both sides. So we're widening out the street. And you mentioned that the sidewalks are going to change, so those properties are pretty close on that.
I think we're putting sidewalk back on one side, I think is how we ended up with that.
Sidewalk's going back on the east side.
There you go.
And there, with my memo on the second page is the survey that shows the alignment and the little wedges that we're needing to acquire from each property.
Is that because that street sits at an angle?
Yes. Yeah, that was a quarter section line years and years ago. So they got 33 feet of right-of-way, and they could only get it from one side and didn't get it from the other, and they went ahead and developed half a street, basically. Sooner or later, it catches up with you.
Okay, anyone else? Any other questions for Jim? Thanks, Jim. Any other discussion, questions? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay, there are no public hearings, no old business, so we will go right to new business. Item six, item A under new business is a resolution to request the assistance of the staff of the Northwest Iowa Planning and Development Commission for the CDBG grant on the 2023 East Side Separation Reconstruction Project.
No moves.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Resolution carries. Item B is a motion to approve change order number one to the 2022 ADA sidewalk ramp upgrades to reflect as-built project quantities for an increase of $4,451. Motion made by Tom.
Second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos nay, motion carries. Item C is a resolution accepting work on the 2022 ADA sidewalk ramp upgrades project.
No move.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Bill. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Item D is a motion to approve change order number one to 2022 NPRL Intermediate Cover Project Northern Plains to reflect as-built project quantities for a decrease of $88,898.85.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brian. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? Yeah. Just about, just about. It's a, you know, we netted $84,000. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Pos nay, the motion carries. Item E is a resolution accepting work on the 2022 NPRL Intermediate Cover Project Northern Plains.
No move.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Brian. Any discussion?
Well, after saving $88,000, we probably don't want to say they did a bad job, you know?
You don't want to discuss this too much?
No, we probably don't.
Okay, all right, all right, okay. Are you sure? Okay, all right, please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay, item seven, seems like a long time, but we'll have the engineers report, Jim.
Good evening again. I'm just going to back up one, talk just a little bit about that landfill project. The reason, one of the reasons you saved, well, the big reason you saved so much on that project is when we set it up, we didn't have the equipment that they needed to move dirt. And so it was a dirt-moving project. And we let it early in the year because we were under DNR requirements to do so. And in the meantime, then you acquired the scraper, and they were able to move dirt themselves, the operators, and do a lot of that work themselves. That's part of it. The other part of it is, is once they got their GPS equipment working again, they were able to dress the slopes and prepare those slopes so that our contractor didn't have to do anything, any kind of subgrade prep, on about half of that project. So that was a big savings, too. So it's really your operating staff that saved you that money after you provided them the tools to do so. So hats off to those guys. I just was going to talk just a little bit about the East Side Reconstruction Project. It's set up, it's, we think, in the funnel. Getting projects into the DOT funnel is all, you know, every couple of years, it's different. But it has to go in, I think tomorrow, in order to be in the January 18 letting. So right now, we're on track to be in the January 18 letting. The project, you know, it's reconstruction, so storm sewer is the driving utility. There's no storm sewer over there, so it's storm sewer separation. This is a, this will complete the storm sewer system that we started, I think, in 1995, where the old railroad crossing is on the river, where you can see the abutments, or just on the west side of Shine's Yard. We brought a pipe up there and eventually got it up to the high school to drain that area. We left the pipe off on Sixth Avenue to go north, and this connects that. So it's 36-inch pipe down to 12-inch. It will storm sewer that whole area between Tenth Avenue and the Shine's Railroad tracks on the west, and then from the north, from the railroad tracks, east-west railroad tracks, down south to, well, basically to Third Street. So picks all that up. And then we're replacing sanitary sewer, since we're in there, and the sanitary sewer is old and in poor condition. And then the water system, the utilities are replacing the water system in that area. All that work, we're going to have all the pavement tore out. We're going to go back in. The existing pavement is 31-foot street, a lot of it seal coat or overlaid. We're going to go back in with a 35-foot street, which is similar to like Fourth Avenue West. So that 35-foot just gives you a little bit more room. There's quite a bit of traffic. That's kind of an entrance to town. So widen that out to 35 feet, use an 8-inch pavement, a little heavier pavement, put it on a subgrade, because we're doing a lot of underground work. There is a petition out there to pave Fifth Avenue. We'll have to see what happens with that. If that work were to be added, it would be an assessment project on there. So that's been talked about, but mainly from Fifth Avenue to Tenth Avenue, New Street the whole way. It'll take a while, you know. But, and I don't, the DOT assigns working days, and so I don't have that information until we get into the, fully into the funnel, we won't know when the late completion date is and the number of working days. But we'll work with them to establish that. So that's that project. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Jim, I've got a question. When the utilities are putting the water lines in, walk me, walk us through, what happens if they run into a lead pipe between what the existing water main now into the house?
Yeah, and that is evolving a little bit, you know, there's, of course, more pressure. We always have tried to replace the lead lines. And historically, like years ago when we brought this storm sewer up, when we hit them, we would bring them to the, to the house, to the meter, you know, replace with copper to the meter, and then that cost would be the property owners. Because this is a DOT project, I'm not sure that, you know, that has to change a little bit. But absolutely, absolutely. And I think the utilities has a plan and has some money set aside to do that. I know we've been doing that on some of the other projects. So, yeah, I think that... Sometimes you don't know how far the lead goes. I owned a house in town that the service coming up is old house. The service coming up was copper. I thought I was home free. And turn the water on, and, you know, the water didn't come out fast enough. And there was a section of lead from the curb stop back to the water main. Those are the sections that we'll hit. And so if we're lucky, if we do hit a lead, hopefully it's been changed out all the way up to the house.
What does the city's cost to go from the main to the curb stop?
No, in Iowa, you own your water service and your sewer service all the way to the main. It's property owner's cost. But a lot of times when we're doing projects and initiating them, the city has picked up that cost or the utility, so. Then maybe just quick on other projects. Oh, jeez, I thought I was going to have to wing it. So if you see all the digging in the North Mall, that's a water quality project. So there's two cells being constructed there. We core out the material, take the asphalt off, core it down about four feet. We got lucky, it's all sand down there. We thought it'd be sand, but we didn't know how far you'd have to go to the sand, but it's right, right there where it needs to be. Come back with a soil, sand, media, they'd call it. It's basically a drainage layer. And then, and then there'll be a depression when it's all done, and that's water quality. And the idea is that the water will filter through that. Underneath there, there's a subdrain system, a drainage system, and then it goes to the storm sewer. But right now, it just flows across the parking lot, carries everything, it catches on the parking lot, dumps it into the intake, goes down the pipe, pipe eventually goes to the river. Now it'll drain that material off the parking lot into the cell, provide some filtration of that storm water, and then it follows the pipe, storm sewer, back out. So two cells in that parking lot. The other cell, QRS, is done. I'm sure you've seen that. And that, again, is also a water quality project. That's what it's designed to do. And there was outside funding for that, grant funding for those projects. They're going to work on those cells. I don't think they'll get them done next week, this week, maybe next week. There's some curb and gutter and some concrete work. We're hoping the weather kind of straightens out a little bit. The wastewater driveway project is complete. That job's all done and seeded. Fourth Street, you know, West Fourth Street, that's a water main. And on Fourteenth Avenue, it's water main and storm sewer. The pipe works all done. We're waiting for some testing. I think they got the testing back today for the water main, and they'll start buttoning up those holes. And Ross is known here, says, "Hope to open West Fourth Street next week." I just don't know if he wrote that note last week or today. So that's not, that's probably not very informative. But I think it's getting out of that intersection, that's kind of the key. And part of the problem on Fourth Street is there's just no room to pile dirt. And so, you know, you could open it to one lane, but it'll go faster if they just keep it closed. So I would say, I would say they'll get the patchwork done this week, and then depending on the temperatures and what for cure time, it probably is open next week. And there's some talk of starting down on 25th Street. They can get manholes, I think, in a couple of weeks. So they thought, they got to get done down on Fourteenth Avenue and Fourth Street, but they thought maybe that first or second week in November, they'd be down on 25th Street on that sewer project. So that one won't disrupt any traffic, so.
Let's hope they, I'm sure those citizens would be happy to see them there this fall yet.
Yeah, like to have it warm up a little bit.
Yeah.
So they're hoping to be all the way north as well, those houses along the highway. They're hoping to be all the way up to Teason property?
Yeah, yes, the project wraps around that corner and turns north. Yep, exactly. All right.
Thanks, Jim. City managers' report, Dan.
I just got back from the Iowa Planning Conference, and I attended a couple of sessions on, good, really good sessions on housing that I think the information I got can benefit Spencer quite a bit. One has to do with using the Housing Trust Fund that Northwest Iowa Planning has. I have to visit with them on seeing if they can expand the use of that more than, they just use it for rehab now. Some places are using it actually for subsidizing housing starts. So needed to have a discussion with them. And then I attended some other sessions. I have required ethics and required law requirements that I got taken care of for my planning credential.
Okay, any questions for Dan?
Dan, I asked for an update on the Aquatic Center and the, some of the water issues and just the overall condition. Can you provide us with that, please?
Yeah, going forward, you know, we had some questions on the accuracy of SMU's meter and stalking with SMU, that we found there's a differential between the mechanical meter we put in and the electronic meter that they put in. SMU's going to take both meters and bench test them over the winter to try to find out where that problem is and to make sure our numbers are accurate. As I explained in the email I sent out to, we don't have any back records that of using an accurate meter. So there's really no way to tell going forward if the amount of water we used last year is reasonable or not. But once we explore that a little bit, I, you know, I did some research. There's pools our size that use more water than us, and pools our size that use significantly less water than us. And so it's kind of still sort of a mystery, but I think getting the meters checked at least will be, knowing that we're paying for the right amount of water going forward, once we get the meters tested and calibrated to the proper amount, once SMU gets done bench testing those meters. I've talked with our new park superintendent. He's already contacted the consultant that worked on that project, and they're going to come and do a report for us here pretty soon to, and go over some possibilities so we can bring those to, at least to CIP or through the budget process. We'll have some good numbers from, on what you want to do with splash pad, rehab the pool or expand the pool or whatever. He's bringing all that, so that's revisiting that information.
Okay, anything else? Okay, next, under the mayor's report, I've got a few items and relatively brief. First of all, a couple of weeks ago, we established that trick-or-treat night on October 31st was going to be from 5:00 to 7:00. And I had no idea that it was the mayor's decision. Mary Beth told me that. Throwing her under the bus here. Anyway, but, so I asked the staff what we've done in the past, and they said, "Well, it's been 5:00 to 7:00." So that's what we established this year as trick-or-treats. So if you want to welcome trick-or-treaters into your home, make sure that you have your porch light on. And if you have it on a little after 7:00, I think that'll be just fine. So, yeah. I think you did tell me that, but maybe not. Okay. Secondly, the mayor's update, the monthly update, which is usually on the last Thursday of the month at 12:30, will be changed this month to Tuesday, October 25, at 12:30. And we'll have Shannon Landauer from the corridor as our guest. Third, a lot of us up on the dais have received some complaints with regard to the odor that comes from the eggplant on the west side of town, right across the street from Stolly's. And I'd like the citizens to know that, you know, the city's been in conversation with the management of the eggplant, Simrise. They have established a schedule to mitigate that odor issue. We've also talked with some of the neighbors in that West Industrial Park area who face that on a daily basis. I know several of the citizens on the west side of town are dealing with that. It seems like on a more regular basis than usual. So to that end, I've asked Dan if he would be in contact with Simrise on a weekly basis and then report back to the council, report back to me. And then we will have that information at our disposal so that when we start to field, if we start to field more complaints, we'll have the information about what Simrise is actually doing and if they're keeping on schedule and so forth. So just want the citizens to know that we are, we have heard your concerns, and we are dealing with those concerns. Fourth, tomorrow and Wednesday, there'll be a little more activity around Main Street. Main Street is hosting the Fall Workshop, so there will be like 50 Nancy Knaves running up around downtown Spencer. So that will be interesting. That will be interesting. So anyway, we're very happy to be able to host an event like that, a state event. And I think that visitors coming into Spencer are going to be, you know, really, I don't know if they're going to be surprised, but I think we have a lot to offer visitors to Spencer with our vibrant downtown. I think Nancy is to be commended, and all of our entrepreneurs on Main Street are to be commended for the work that they do. Fifth, just notice, and I'll probably make another comment on this at the first meeting in November, but we have an election coming up on November 8. And just want the public to know that there have been some changes in election law in the past year. So just want to go over a couple of those changes. First of all, in order to get an absentee ballot, you have to request that absentee ballot by October 24, Monday, October 24. So if you want to vote absentee, you have to request that ballot. You've got a week to do it. They aren't just going to send out absentee ballots. You have to request it yourself. That absentee ballot must be received by, in the auditor's office by November 8, that's Election Day, by 8:00 PM. You can vote in person at the auditor's office starting October 19, which I believe is Wednesday, right? Okay. And then lastly, we have a Northwest Iowa League of Cities meeting in Sheldon Thursday. So council, if you would like to attend, please let Mary Beth know, and we'll get it taken care of. So that's all I've got. Counseling committee reports.
Surprisingly, all we have is the next regular council meeting on the 7th of November.
Okay. Item 11, I entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. Motion ma- Motion made by Bill. Second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. Item 12, other business opportunity to address the council. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, meeting adjourned.